And we are now live, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your attendance tonight. I would like to call this meeting to order. Our development charges, public meeting. It's regarding development charges in Elgin County. In accordance with the Planning Act, Section 12.1A, before council considers the development charges by law, it must hold a public meeting. Purpose of tonight's public meeting is to gather feedback from members of public regarding the development charges background study and draft development charges by law options as posted in our Elgin County website. In addition to feedback received tonight, the county of Elgin will continue to collect written feedback from interested parties until July 15, 2021. Comments can be sent to dccharges@elgin.ca. Hampson Consulting was engaged by council to prepare a development charges background study and draft by law options. I will now welcome Stefan from Hampson Consulting to provide a summary of the background study. Stefan, welcome, and whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I'm going to speak for about 25 minutes just on the results of the development charges background study. My name is Stefan Kretschner, I'm an associate partner at Hampson Consulting. And as you mentioned, Mr. Warden, Hampson was retained to assist the county with preparing this study. And I'm the project manager for the assignment. Next slide, please. As you mentioned too, that this is a formal public meeting being held under Section 12 of the Development Charges Act. And it's required in advance of the county passing a development charges by law. And should the county pass such a by law, this will be the first ever county development charges by law. And our purpose this evening is to provide the public with the opportunity to make representations on the background study and the draft by law. The background study was released on April the 23rd and the by law on May 12th in accordance with the notice requirements of the Development Charges Act. Our next slide, please. I'm going to just briefly go through the background study process and the results. Focusing mainly on the development related capital program. That's the foundation for the development charges that have been calculated. And obviously, I will set out the rates that are in the study. And then also lay out some implementation options for council to consider, which are contained in the background study, as well as some policy considerations for the by law itself. And then we can talk a little bit about next steps. The next slide, please. So for those of you who are new to development charges, these are fees that are imposed on development to pay for growth related or development related capital costs. The idea behind them is that they can be used by municipalities to pay for new or expanded infrastructure and facilities to allow municipalities to maintain their levels of service in the face of of growth. And the principle behind them is really that growth should pay for itself. So that, you know, the cost of expanding infrastructure and constructing new facilities is not borne by your existing tax and rate payers. There's a prescribed process to passing a by law. And the key one is to undertake a background study. And the legislation prescribes a methodology for conducting the background study and calculating the rates. And that's shown on this slide here. So step one is to do a forecast of future development. Step two is to do a sort of backward looking exercise at the level of service that's been provided in the county over the last 10 years. And that will set a ceiling on how much you can use development charges to fund future infrastructure. The third step is to identify the capital costs that might be incurred in the future to expand services or construct new new infrastructure. And then those costs need to be subjected to several tests. Any funding the county is going to be receiving from upper level grants, for example, or other kinds of subsidies has to be removed from those capital costs. The extent to which those costs are going to benefit the existing residents in the county also has to be removed from development charge consideration. We have to account for any available development charge reserve funds that a municipal miss valley has on hand, which in this case there are none. And to the extent that certain large pieces of infrastructure can provide a benefit beyond the period into which we're looking in the future, that so-called post-period benefit must also be removed from the calculation. And then what we're left with is a pool of costs that are eligible for development charge funding. And those are recovered as a charge per unit for residential development and as a charge per square meter of gross floor area for non-residential development. Our next slide, then. The background study must also consider area-specific charges to reflect the different needs for services in different areas. So municipalities have the option to impose a flat uniform charge across the entire jurisdiction or different differentiated charges in in different parts of their of their jurisdiction. Typically, area-specific charges are only used for water sewer and stormwater services. And we're not considering those services as part of this background study or by law. For the services we are considering, things like roads, libraries and ambulance services. All the residents of the county have access to all of these services. And it's very rare, extremely rare, in fact, for these kinds of services to be subject to area-specific charges in Ontario. And so given that structure, the background study recommends that the development charges be implemented on a county-wide basis. As far as the development forecast is concerned. Our next slide, please. It's interesting, actually, in the last five years, we've seen a real run-up in in population and housing growth in the county. And indeed, growth has not slowed at all during the pandemic period. In fact, in some parts, housing construction has accelerated. And so we anticipate that some of this higher growth will continue through the development charge forecast period. And that forecast period has been established over a period extending to 2031. And so if you look at the chart here, you can see that the growth forecast is predicated on around about 200 housing units per year across the county to 2031 and population growth of around 4,500 persons. And population growth in those new housing units of around 6,400 persons. On the next slide, please. It's a similar story on the non-residential side. So quite robust growth from the current number of jobs in the county, which is around 15,500. Around 1,400 jobs, 1,300, 1,400 jobs to 2031, reaching a total job count of 16,800 by 2031. And building space associated with that new employment of around 91,000 square meters of new gross floor area. More details about the growth forecast can be found in Appendix A to the background study. In terms of the capital works that have been included in the development charge calculation, for each service which has been considered, capital programs have been compiled based on existing county capital budget and forecast documents and in consultation with county staff and council. And a list of the works was presented to county council for review on April the 6th in advance of the release of the background study. And as I mentioned, those costs have been adjusted in accordance with the development charge legislation. As I mentioned a few slides earlier. The next slide, please. This just summarizes a breakdown of the costs for each of the general services for which we've calculated a charge. So if we just move from left to right, you'll see the list of general services, library services, land ambulance, long-term care, provincial offenses act services and development-related studies. A $12 million capital program has been considered in the background study. A significant component of that program, just short of $6 million, is ineligible for development charge funding because it represents a benefit to existing residents. That portion of the program will have to be funded from a non-development charge source, invariably your property taxes. And then a portion of the program also represents a benefit beyond 2031. So that of the $12 million program, only $2.2 million is brought forward to the development charge calculation. And the biggest component of that relates to the library services, the long-term care service and the the development-related studies. More details about the general services can be found in Appendix B of the background study. Appendix C of the background study deals with the engineering service of roads and related works or services related to a highway as it's termed under the legislation. Here we have a $10.2 million program of which around about 34%, 3.4 million has been excluded from the development charge calculation as a benefit to the existing residents. And $6.8 million is brought forward to the development charges. This program includes a range of of works, including intersection improvements, signalization, new turning lanes and accessways to new development areas, as well as investments in GIS and transportation master plan updates. This slide then sets out the maximum permissible development charge rates for residential development that the county could impose. Of course, the county is under no obligation to, if it chooses to impose development charges, it's under no obligation to impose the maximum rates. But these are, these are what you could justify under the Development Charges Act. And you can see on the table on the left, it's a charge of just over $4,000 a unit for a single and semi-detached home. A charge of $2,657 per unit for a row house or or other type of multiple dwelling. And a charge of $2,100 for an apartment unit. The vast majority of the charge is related to the roadworks, 73%. And the rest of the charge is fairly evenly distributed among the other general services. On the non-residential side, the maximum permissible charge is $15.42 per square meter. Again, overwhelmingly related to the roads and related works that I just mentioned. You'll note here that there's no charge been calculated for libraries or long-term care for the reason that the the need for those services is seen to be driven entirely by the residential sector. The next slide, please. So these are charts that I showed to council previously. They compare the the calculated charge in various places throughout the county with some of the development charges that are imposed in similar and surrounding jurisdictions. So what you have here is the charge that is paid at the counter by the developer. So it includes not just the upper-tier charge, but also the area municipal charge and any area-specific charges that are imposed at the area municipal level. Those are shown in red. The lower-tier charges are shown in gold. And the county charges are shown in green. And you can see here that even if the county were to impose the full charge, the the charges that would exist in the county still fall within the mid to lower end of the range of charges that are shown here. And indeed, there are several municipalities in Elgin that do not have, lower-tier municipalities that don't have development charges at all. Next slide, please. This is a similar comparison, but comparing the charge that would be imposed on commercial development. So it's a similar story, really. Were the county to impose the fully calculated charge, the overall charge on commercial developers would be anywhere between the mid-range and and lower end of the range, depending on where you are, of of the municipalities that are shown here. The next slide, then. Industrial development is treated slightly differently in in many municipalities. So you'll see there are several municipalities, certainly in Oxford County and elsewhere, which exempt outright industrial developers from the payment of development charges. And so and indeed, the only lower-tier municipality in Elgin that that imposes a charge on industrial development is in Southold. And so the introduction of a county charge for industrial development here would be new in in all municipalities except for Southold. And this slide here just compares the the county component of the overall charge only. So it's just it's just comparing what other counties charge for their services. Most of these places, the the vast majority of the charge is related to roads. Oxford is a little unusual, of course, because water and sewer is imposed at the county level. And so you can see that in Ingersoll, a true apples-to-apples comparison would be to just compare the green. But but the county does levy a water and sewer charge in Ingersoll. But the Elgin County charge is not too unlike some of the other municipalities. Certainly not as high as the fast-growing places in Simcoe and Peterborough and perhaps Gray. But very similar to Dufferin and Wellington. Middlesex County does not impose a development charge currently. Next slide, please. On the commercial side of things, again, this is just a straight comparison of county charges. It's a similar story. The Elgin County charge, very comparable to to the other counties. And Simcoe County being a little bit of an outlier in that, you know, there's a lot of growth pressure there and a lot of need to expand infrastructure in response to that pressure. Gray County does not impose any charge on commercial development. And the next slide then is the same for industrial development. And here, as we have the residential side of things, many counties do not impose a development charge on industrial developers. Oxford, Peterborough, Gray and Middlesex. Whereas Simcoe, Wellington, Dufferin do. And Elgin County's charge, if it was imposed, would 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 certainly fall within the range of of Wellington and Dufferin. Just moving now then to the by law itself. The by law has been been released in draft and reviewed by your legal counsel. It provides for certain exemptions for development. The only exemptions that it does set out, however, are either statutory exemptions, which you have to provide to school boards, municipalities for residential expansions in limited circumstances. And for industrial expansions, provided the expansions don't exceed 50% of the existing building. But we've also included a very common exemption for temporary structures as well, which is almost uniform across the province. We have not included any exemptions for non-statutory purposes. So but we have here provided some common exemptions, particularly in this part of of the province for council to consider. So bona fide farm operations are typically exempt from development charges in southwestern Ontario. So are places of worship and cemeteries. Public hospitals are also very common. And as we've seen already, various forms of non-residential development, particularly industrial development. The background study also sets out for council three options for implementing development charges, recognizing that this would be the first time the county was introducing these types of charges. So the first option would be to implement the fully calculated charges upon the passage of the by law. The second option would be to pass the by law, but delay the date at which the new charges take place to allow a period of transition for for development that perhaps is underway right now. And we've we've selected for this option delaying them until January the first, 2022, which is about a six-month period, depending on when you pass the by law, of course. And then the third option would be to phase in the charges. And so in this case, we've we've presented council with a phase in that would impose 25% of the of the fully calculated charge for the first year of the by law, 50% for the second year, 75% for the third year, and then into the full charge for years four and five. Other by law provisions that have been included in the draft are provisions to allow the the charges to be indexed, to keep pace with inflation over the life of the by law. And so we've put an annual indexing provision on January the first of every year. There are also opportunities for developers who redevelop within five years of the demolition or destruction of a property to get a credit on the DC that is payable. So for example, if if a home is is demolished, provided that it's rebuilt within five years, that developer would not pay a development charge. There are enabling provisions in the by law that would allow the county to charge interest on development charge payments that are frozen or are paid through installments for certain types of development. And there are also some very standard provisions that would allow the county, should it wish to, enter into agreements with developers for services that developers provide or to adjust the timing of the development charge payment. So I won't get into that, but there are some detailed provisions in the legislation that allow you to do that. And the by law has enabling provisions for that stuff. And so then just finally, council has been heavily involved in this process. We in fact, we started the process with a DC workshop with council back in January. And as I mentioned earlier, we brought to council the list of development-related capital works that we were considering for development charge funding on April the 6th and got direction from them to prepare a background study on the basis of that program. As I mentioned earlier, then, the background study was released on the 23rd of April and the by law a few weeks later. We're here today for the public meeting and and of course, happy to answer any questions or comments that are received this evening. But we will also assist the county in responding to any written submissions that are received and up to July the 15th. And the next step after that would be for council to consider an implementation option and the by law itself. That can be done at any time within a year of the background study's release. Otherwise, if it's, if you don't pass a by law within a year, the background study will lapse. And if you want to start the process again, you will have to redo the background study. After the by law is passed, there are notice requirements after it's passed, and there is also an appeal period for 40 days after it's passed. Anyone can appeal the rates or any provision of the by law. And those appeals are adjudicated at the local planning appeal tribunal. After that 40-day period, the by law is protected from any appeal for the rest of its five-year lifespan. So again, I'm going to stop there and I'm I think there are a few delegates and I'm I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the delegates or members of council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. Appreciate it. It is now time for the registered delegates to speak. Each delegate has up to 10 minutes. Delegates are speaking in alphabetical order based on the first letter of their last names. And as a reminder to council, tonight we're receiving input from the speakers regarding the development charges background study and draft by law options, except for clarification of matters of interest to the presenters. Tonight is not the time or place for detailed exchanges. We will have plenty of time for discussion when council considers the matter at a later date. List of registered delegates, first one up is Jim with Juvies. And I hope I pronounce that right. From Far, Far High Holdings Corporation. Jim, are you here tonight? If you are, the floor is yours. And I'm thinking he's not here. Okay. Given his opportunity, we'll move on to our second one. That is Aldo Crancy from the Crancy Group. Aldo, are you here? And I'm getting a signal that he's not here. There must be some good hockey games on that, other than the Leafs. But up next, our third one is Angela DeVries from the St. Thomas' Elgin Home Builders Association. Angela, are you here?
Hi there. I am here. I'm going to pass on that opportunity to our chair of our our development charge committee, to Tom Ruby, who's also on the call.
All right. Well, welcome, Tom and Angela. Go ahead, Tom, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the for the opportunity to to be a delegate here tonight. And I want to thank council for moving ahead with a well-thought-out background study. And I want to thank Hampson for their work. I just, I had one, one clarification. The city of St. Thomas is a single tier, but within the county. So does the charge apply within the city of St. Thomas?
Who can answer that? I'm Stefan. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, it's, it would not apply.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And then so certainly as developers and as a representative of the Home Builders Association Development Charge Committee, we understand the principle of growth paying for growth. And obviously, we recognize that if some of the infrastructure doesn't move ahead, then that impinges us in in further development of property. So we applaud you for for, you know, sort of longer-term planning. I guess one of the things that's come up that we would ask for council's consideration on is the majority of us have pre-sold homes for the next year, year and a half. And so we've made commitments to people with fixed prices without taking into account an extra $4,000 approximately per unit without the opportunity to go back and recover that from those sales. So my request on behalf of the committee tonight would be that as council deliberates this, that they give consideration to a phase-in period. It would be very difficult if the charge came into effect the day that you passed the by law. Obviously, deferring it till January 1 would help. The best case for us would be if you can do a phase-in, given that the county's never had a development charge in the past. a development charge in the past. If if you could see your way clear to doing a phase-in, I think that was, Hemson had that as a third option, where they had the initial charge 25% and then the second year 50, and then 75, and then 100% of the of the total charge. So that would be obviously our ask, that would be our preference. I think we could, we can work with that. And I think on behalf of the committee, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity. And that's, that's all I have to present tonight. Thank you.
All right, Tom, appreciate that. And I think we're out of delegations. I think we're expecting more, but.
If I can suggest that Caroline try to get a hold of the first two and see if there's an issue?
We did reach out to the other, those who had registered. Haven't heard back yet.
Oh, okay, well.
All right. We do have some time. Julie, should I? Yeah, Grant, go ahead. Is that you?
Sorry, Mr. Warden. They're both developers working in Tavilville. Actually, with the same subdivision.
Well, they're not here, so I guess we don't know what we're doing. But we've given everyone the opportunity, and I think we're almost at the end of our program. So again, I want to thank Stefan for your presentation. Well done. Well, thank everyone for being here and being attentive. Tom, certainly appreciate you being here, and we'll certainly take your your request into consideration. There's nothing further. Julie, go ahead.
Just very quickly, I know we've referenced the date of July 15th a couple of times as being the the end date for receipt of written comments and submissions as part of this review process. And I'd like to note that that date is actually July 26, 2021. So we'll update the website to that effect, but that is the date we'll be working with.
All right, a bit of a reprieve for procrastinators like myself. So thank you for that information. If there's nothing further, again.
Just a question, Mr. Warden. Julie, I can only assume that the two candidates that didn't speak tonight would have an opportunity to have a written submission?
Certainly, yes. And we'll encourage that when we follow up tomorrow as well.
Okay, that's, that's good.
That's understandable. All right. Well, everyone, shorter meeting than maybe we thought, but I don't see anyone really objecting. So again, thank you for your attendance, everyone. Stay safe. Take care.
Thanks.
Good night.